Okay, we are now recording and live streaming our, streaming our forum on Facebook. Welcome everyone. I'm Miriam Raftery, the editor of East County Magazine and moderator of tonight's forum. I want to thank everyone for joining us at our forum for the La Mesa City Council candidates who are running to fill the vacancy left by Dr. Akila Weber's election to the State Assembly. La Mesa is my hometown. It's known as the jewel of the hills, a place with a historic village and a strong sense of pride and community character. It's also a city that's seen its share of challenges in the last year and a half or so with the global pandemic that's left many people and businesses struggling, exacerbating problems such as homelessness and access to affordable housing. The city has also faced civil unrest, raising concerns over equity for all, but also public safety. The next council member will, will be addressing these issues and many more. And so we are very pleased tonight to have four of the candidates who have agreed to join us. Three of them are here right now. Mezhon Afshan is on her way. She just called and she got stuck in a little bit of traffic, so we will let her join us as soon as she arrives. Currently present, we have, oh, she just arrived. Let me admit her. Welcome Mezhon. Joining us now, we have Kathleen Brand, Patricia Dillard, and Laura Lothian, and here's Mezhon. So thank you all for coming. There are also two other candidates in the race who are not present tonight. Michelle Loudon did not respond to multiple emails and phone calls. Jim Stiringer says he only participates in in-person events, but he did send information on his candidacy and you can find that on our website at eastcountymagazine.org. So we're going to start tonight by asking each candidate to provide an opening statement of two minutes and then we'll move on to questions and wrap up with one-minute closing statements. So you will each get some time at the end to address anything that you didn't fit in in opening statements or that wasn't included in our questions. So let's start by having, we'll, we'll begin with Kathleen. If you can share your qualifications, why you're running, and your top priorities if elected in your opening statement. And we do have a timekeeper Jonathan Getz who will give everyone a 15-second warning and then let you know when the time is up. Kathleen, let's hear from you.
Thank you, Miriam. My name is Kathleen Brand. I have been a resident of La Mesa for 21 years and I have been a volunteer in this community for over 20. So I work as a city planner for the city of San Diego in downtown San Diego. And I'm also a licensed landscape architect. I've been a small business owner. I have worked for private firms and now I work in the public sector. Sector. So for me, I have a broad background in how cities work. I have a very good understanding of all the new regulations coming from the city or from the state down to us. And I have a great passion and respect for La Mesa. I love this city. I think this is the best small city in this county. And I think it is the responsibility of the city council to make sure that it stays that way. The three points that I basically am bringing forward on my platform is equity, transparency, and quality life. Equity in that we must think about La Mesa as a whole. We must think about all the neighborhoods and to continue to create strong neighborhoods. Our El Cajon Boulevard, our University Avenue, our Lake Murray, all of that, as well as our downtown, our mall. We need to make sure that when the city is spending money on infrastructure or any type of amenities, even fixing our roads, that we are looking at the city comprehensively and all as a whole. The other thing is transparency. I know we have started with the Oversight Board for our police department, but I also want to bring a lot of transparency to the city government. I think that everything that the city does, every decision that's made has to be accounted for. And no more meetings that are done verbally. We have to have a public record of all information and the reason why. And finally, the final one is quality of life. And that leads to better parks, more parks, infrastructure, street repair, sidewalks, ADA ramps. That's my focus. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Kathleen. Patricia, could we hear from you with your opening statement?
Yes, and thank you. Thank you for having me. Yes, my name is Patricia Dillard. I'm running for La Mesa City Council. I am rooted here in La Mesa. We've been homeowners since 1996, so 25 years rooted here. We've also raised our three children here and they all attended our schools. So we are very much a part of the community of La Mesa. The reason I'm running is because I currently serve as the vice chair for the Community Police Oversight Board. It's something that I've been doing now for almost two years. Worked on the ordinance to get everything set up for the board, which was recently approved. Well, it wasn't recently approved now. At the end of last year, we finally got all the ordinances approved so that we could create the board. And then I also started with the board in January of this year and was quickly made vice chair. And we've been working ever since to bring criminal justice reform to the La Mesa Police Department. And I also recently just helped hire the independent police auditor. And that team is now very fast at work, doing a lot of auditing to try to bring some answers to the community. The reason why I'm running is because I want to continue to do more for La Mesa. I am endorsed by Dr. Akila Weber. She's chosen me to take that seat. And I feel very well qualified to do that job. Not only am I already working with the city of La Mesa and the police department, but I'm also a businesswoman and I understand how to negotiate and make hard decisions that would be in the best interest of the community of La Mesa. I want to work to better our streets and our neighborhoods. And I know that construction is an issue that has been brought up time and time again. And I have a lot of great ideas that would help build our communities, rebuild some communities that need to be rebuilt, and promote walkable, bikeable areas for our community so that we're not faced with so many traffic issues and other construction that is affecting our traffic and other parts of the community. I look forward to working with the city council members and getting a lot of this work done. And I would ask for your vote. Please vote now, even though the ballots are, say, November the 2nd. Please pull them out now and vote and send them in the mail and mark Patricia Dillard for city council. You won't regret it. Doing well.
Okay. Thank you very much, Patricia. Laura, let's hear your opening statement, please. Laura Lothian.
Okay. Hi, hi, Miriam. Thanks for hosting this, this forum. I have a feeling.
Oops, your sound just cut out, Laura. Laura? We're not hearing you.
I'm pausing the clock.
Okay, yeah, we'll pause the clock for you for a moment to fix this technical problem. If it froze up and you need to log back in, try to log out and back in. We can have Mezhon do her statement and then come back to you, Laura. Do you want to do that?
About a couple of times. Now?
Say something?
My, I think.
There you are.
I'm not hearing it. It's, it's like in and fading in and out. I can hear about it one out of every five words.
We started with ATT and it's awful. Terrible. And so I went to my house and picked it up there.
Oh, my goodness. Um, do you have a cellphone? You could try logging in on a cellphone maybe, or? If I knew you had a bad connection, I would have said you could come over and use my spare computer over here. I'm in La Mesa, but. Mezhon, while she's working on that, why don't we hear your opening statement and we'll come back to Laura here in a moment.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Miriam, and everyone for tuning in tonight and having us.
And can you turn your volume up just a little bit? It's hard to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Okay. Hello. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Mezhon Afshan and I'm a 30-plus-year resident of La Mesa. I went to La Mesa Middle School. I attended Helix High School and graduated and also attended Grossmont College and transferred to San Francisco State, where in my last year, I was an intern for then Gavin, then Mayor Gavin Newsom of the city and county of San Francisco. I went on to work for Nancy Pelosi in her congressional office as she became the Speaker of the House. And eventually I moved back to San Diego, back to La Mesa and worked on the San Diego, worked for the San Diego County Democratic Party as one of two field directors for the 2008 campaign. And so I have a long history of working in the community. And as of about eight years ago, seven, eight years ago, I started working in immigrants' rights and refugee rights. And as a civil rights advocate who is, who has co-founded our Borderlands for Equity organization in La Mesa since January of last year, we focus on those who have been discriminated on. We represent those that have been discriminated against on the basis of gender, race, religion, ethnicity, and sexual orientation. As a longtime advocate of and a public policy person, I know I have the most experience being an active Democrat for 20 years and making sure to understand what policy means when it comes to the city, state, and federal government. I'm the only candidate with that experience out of all of the candidates that are running this year. And I think it's very important to have somebody who understands what it means to understand the policy process and governments and how they work together. And we need to be able to.
10 seconds.
Our equitable policy platform, our equitable policy platform is absolutely going to help our community members. And I look forward to addressing it in the rest of this, in the rest of this candidate forum. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Mezhon. And Laura is back with us. Laura, can you say something so we make sure we can hear you this time?
Hi, Miriam. I am now on my iPhone.
Much better connection. iPhones are great. Salvation of us from these, some of these Zoom meetings. Now we're going to hear from Laura with her opening statements.
Okay. All right. Well, hi, Miriam. And again, thank you for hosting this candidate forum because everybody an opportunity to hear the differences between us. My name is Laura Lothian. I am a city council candidate. It is an open election. There are no incumbents and it is a special election. Every day is Election Day until November 2nd. So I know that the ballots have been hit last week, so please check Laura Lothian, mail those in ASAP. It is a complete mail-in election. I am a longtime La Mesa mom, three adult children now, a longtime La Mesa resident and homeowner. I'm also La Mesa's top real estate agent. I have the distinction of selling the most homes in La Mesa for the last 20 years. So I think that sort of makes me La Mesa's unofficial cheerleader. I love this town, so it's very easy for me to get other people to fall in love with it. I, our current city council right now has four members that are all from the government sector. I really believe that a voice that is exclusively from the private sector could be something that would give the business community in La Mesa an ally on the city council. And I also know, I know a strong work ethic and I understand getting results done. It's amazing to me when I see a government entities table and table and postpone and get meetings and they don't seem to ever just come to a decision. So my top priorities for La Mesa is help the businesses. We are overregulated. We are overtaxed. We also have very, we have very messy parks, streets, on-ramps and off-ramps. I don't understand why our standards are so low that we accept litter and trash. It's, let's get rid of it. The other thing also is get back to the potholes. I have a client who was filling his own potholes before he put his house on the market. Come on, that's something a city is opposed to. So, and the last thing is, is that Sandag is trying to sneak a tax and track mileage tax. Where every time you go to register your car, you would get taxed for all the miles you drove. That would be devastating to the economy and it would hurt the people who could least afford it. And, and believe it or not, that city council seat on La Mesa will have a huge impact on Sandag, which is why I'm getting so much support from the Republican Party of San Diego County, the Lincoln Club, Reform California, other mayors like Mayor Bailey from Coronado who's running for Congress. They want, they really want to fight against this extra tax.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, as you can hear, folks out there, we have, and see, for those watching on Facebook, we have a very diverse array of candidates tonight with quite a range of opinions on the issues. And now we're going to move on to the question section. And thank you to those of you out there who sent some suggested questions in. We've tried to combine them and get as many in as we could. The first few questions, candidates will have two minutes each to respond. And then we have a couple of questions at the end. It'll be shorter. We will rotate who answers first, so that throughout the evening, everybody will get to go first and everybody will be last, depending, you know, what you think is an advantage there. Patricia, we'll start with you on this question. The pandemic has exacerbated our region's already serious homelessness problem. The city of La Mesa currently does not have shelters or transitional housing to help the homeless get off of the streets. We have seen from the hepatitis outbreak a couple of years ago and now a shigella outbreak in San Diego locally, that ignoring homelessness can have public health ramifications as well as humanitarian concerns. So the question is, what steps, if any, would each of you support to reduce homelessness in La Mesa and help those who are unhoused find access to services, shelters, transition, transitional or permanent housing? Patricia, we'll let you go first on this one.
Okay. And thank you for that question. It's a really important question. As I walk, knock, and talk to voters, it is often brought up that, and also we did a survey last year with the task force and determined that that was the number one concern for the city of La Mesa when I worked on the task force last year. And, and it is an important issue. It is a multifaceted issue. And what I would like to do is something that I've already been doing is, first of all, we have to reach out to nonprofit organizations that are already specialized in homelessness. There's many different facets of homelessness. And the fact that we have the largest per capita trolley station stops, does it kind of exacerbates the situation? Because people can quickly get off of the trolley in La Mesa and then go, you know, to other cities that are nearby, like Lemon Grove and El Cajon, Santee, et cetera, and then stop in at another, you know, undetermined time. So it's really hard to try to get a grip on, you know, just how many homeless we have and where these people are exactly from any given time. So we have to work with communities that are outside of La Mesa as well as within to try to develop a plan that we're all working together to try to minimize the homelessness issue. And of course, it, it filters into criminal justice, which is another part of my platform that, you know, we can work with the police department. They actually have a program, okay, called Home. That's on the city of La Mesa website. And they're also working diligently to try to get people that are, have expertise in mental health and can assist with this issue. And as far as having a place for them to go, we also need to have our own shelter here in La Mesa.
Thank you, Patricia. Mezhon, can you please elaborate on your views on how to address the homelessness issue?
Absolutely. And as the only candidate endorsed by the San Diego County Democratic Party and the Sierra Club, I think it's very important to understand that our issue of houseless siblings on these streets is not going to go away. This pandemic has not only revealed the inequities of our healthcare system, but it's also reveals the inequities that have been faced by so many of our siblings that have been struggling for decades. We need to be able to expand wraparound services. And this is part of my equitable policy platform to make sure that we expand not just mental health programs, but also the wraparound services provided like organizations, bless you, provided by organizations and groups that are already doing this work in La Mesa. We absolutely dropped the ball when it came to creating a shelter in La Mesa a couple of years ago. And I think that this is a priority for our community because as many as, as many of us have seen, they, there, the numbers of folks on the streets have only increased unfortunately over the past several years. And so I urge everybody to vote for me for city council and make sure to visit our website at www.votemizgon2021.com. And we would love your support in these final last, less than three weeks. And make sure to fill out those ballots before it's too late.
Okay. Thank you, Mezhon. Laura, let's hear from you with your views on how to address La Mesa's homelessness problems.
Okay. Okay. So by all measures, the homeless population is getting worse throughout California and La Mesa. California has thrown $13 billion at the homeless problem in the last three years. The way, usually you can solve a problem with money, but in this situation, we're not solving it. We're making it worse. The money goes to all of these cities and counties and grants. There's a lot of bloated spending, wasteful spending, and it's very disjointed. I remember 15 years ago, La Mesa had basically one homeless guy and his name was Larry. Now we have dozens. Yesterday I was by the Heritage Inn Hotel and I was shocked. Can, whoops, can you hear me? Yeah. Oh, there's, there's, I mean, there's like a, there's a tent city. Point Loma has a tent city now. La Mesa has tent cities. And, and the problem is, we can't, La Mesa can't solve the problem because La Mesa is a high-density city that has expensive real estate. I don't know why we're building shelters and homeless hotels in San Francisco, Malibu, Los Angeles, La Mesa, San Diego. It doesn't make sense because you'll build a shelter and you'll never have enough beds because no matter what you have, the surrounding community is going to experience the overflow. The true solution, and to me, it's, it's so obvious. I don't know why it's not being done, is take that money and build facilities where the, where the, there's open space, not where you're in downtown Bankers Hill and downtown San Diego and downtown La Mesa. But you build it where there's open space, the real estate is cheap, and the economies are depressed over there. And then you have, the homeless people would have shelter, food, medical care, housing, babysitting, job training. And then you could ban the living on the streets, relieving yourself on the streets, injecting drugs on yourself on the streets. And the question is always framed, how will you help the homeless? It's never how will you reduce the homeless? Or how will you help the communities struggling with homelessness in their neighborhoods and their businesses? There's businesses in downtown La Mesa that literally have people sleeping in their doorsteps every night that they have to deal with in the morning when they open their businesses.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. And those are points well taken also. Kathleen, could we hear your views on how you would address the homelessness situation in La Mesa?
Well, I think you have to have a multi-pronged approach to the homeless situation. It's many different facets to the, to the whole problem. And I think you're seeing more people homeless and on the streets because they got pushed out of their houses. They lost their jobs. The pandemic has not helped whatsoever. So I think with this multi-pronged approach, you have to see it more reasonably, like a regional scale. So we need to work with Lemon Grove, with the county, with El Cajon as a comprehensive plan so that we can actually get something done. Whether that means La Mesa has a small shelter for the homeless, that could be a start. But then we also need supportive of housing. Supportive housing is when you first take people off the street and they get housing with all of their conditions, whether it is dependencies, whether it's mental health. And that's where you get the wraparound services to stabilize people, to find help for people, to get training for people. And then from there, the absolute most important thing we should be doing now is building affordable housing. It is not government subsidized housing. Affordable housing is for working-class people. And working-class people are being pushed out of San Diego. So that first level of affordability is 80% of the area median income. That's a single individual making $65,000 a year. That's what we're building housing for. People who are working full-time and can't even afford to live in San Diego region. So to me, we don't have a housing problem. We have an affordable housing problem. And that is exasperating our homeless issues. So we need to be working with our neighbors. We need to be working with the county. We need to be part of the solution. And each one of us is going to have to work together to assure that we have a vibrant economy for everyone, including the middle class, including the working class, as well as those that can afford the housing prices of today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. And I want to thank everyone, by the way, for staying on time with these answers so we can give everyone equal time and getting as many questions as possible. Last year, racial justice protests and then a devastating riot shook La Mason's sense of security while also exposing trust issues between people of color and the police. And certainly La Mesa is not alone in many of these issues. Since then, La Mesa has created a citizens' police oversight board. They fired a police officer and they hired Chief Sweeney to head up the police force. I would like to know each of your opinions about the proposals made by the police oversight board and reforms undertaken so far by the police department, including Chief Sweeney's, I think, proposed six-step plan that most of you have probably seen. I mean, do these things go far enough, too far? And what are ideas might any of you have for healing racial tensions in La Mesa, building trust in police, but also assuring public safety? Mezhon, it's your turn to go first.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that question, Miriam.
Could you turn your sound up a little, please?
Thank you so much for that question. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we'll start your time over from here. Okay.
Thank you so much. That's a great question. And I've had the chance to meet Chief Sweeney in his multiple conversations with La Masons. And he implemented some of the suggestions that I made to him in his first presentation in La Mesa when he became chief. So I know firsthand as a civil rights advocate, how to speak to and how to work with in collaboration and with law enforcement, whether it be the police department of La Mesa, whether it be the sheriff's department in our unincorporated areas, whether it be DHS, FBI, our multiple layers of government that require law enforcement to, you know, really step up in what's happening in La Mesa. As a legal observer of what happened in La Mesa last May 30, it is critical that we turn a page on the ugly incidents of the past several years. And I suggest on, as part of our equitable policy platform, to be able to make sure we continue to fund the independent auditor for our police oversight board. And I have worked with other police oversight boards in our county to make sure that we continue to address this issue of safety in our communities, but also change the communication by implementing a new cultural sensitivity training for not just police officers, but the administrative staff and all of our La Mesa City Council and government workers. That will go a long way to make sure that we address these issues and re-educate ourselves on how to communicate with our community members. And without these changes, how will we, how will we be able to address equity? Equity is not an issue that can be done with one vote, one resolution, one election, and one action. It is an ongoing conversation that we have to commit to as a community in La Mesa and have ongoing conversations as they involve and make sure that we have our communities of color. And as a woman of color, I know that our community deserves to have everybody thrive. And so I urge everybody to vote for me to make sure that we can turn the page on the ugly incidents of the past several years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Laura, let's hear from you on the issue of racial tensions, policing, and public safety.
Okay. So, uh, last year was pretty shocking. I live in the village and I couldn't, I couldn't believe the looting. I couldn't believe the rock throwing. I couldn't believe the fires. I drove to the library, the police department, everywhere. And the look I saw on people's faces was not one of unfair or suffering. I was looking at glee. It was, they, it was anarchy and they were having a wonderful time. There could have been anger at the base of it, but ultimately, ultimately it turned into stealing, looting, burning, and it was horrible. I want people to recognize that La Mesa is 109 years old. We have had a Mayberry reputation for over a century. Now, a lot of that has to do with how safe the police have kept the city of La Mesa. We have had, if you ask any police officer over the years, there have been thousands, tens of thousands, even hundreds of thousands of police interaction with members of the public. There have been three incidences in the last few years that, that garnered all that attention. They were racial incidents. And yes, they need to be reviewed. We don't want any racial incidents, but we also have to realize that there's always more to the story than what appears on the surface. And a lot of times we have a media that's very biased that wants to inflame tensions because it causes more people to watch the news. So what I don't want to happen is that we have police that are afraid to police. And I know that we have an oversight committee that was chosen to basically police the police. And did you also know that you can be a felon on probation and be on that police oversight committee? And did you also know that you can be a felon on probation and be on that police oversight committee? So again, I talk to police all the time. They feel isolated, they feel demoralized. And I'm afraid that our city is gonna turn into the spikes in crimes like cities are experiencing all over the country, and we do not want that in La Mesa.
Uh, Kathleen, thank you Laura. Kathleen, I believe you're the last one on this. Uh, can you address your views on racial tensions, police, policing, police reforms, and the public safety question?
Actually, I think Patricia's next, but.
I'm sorry, uh, I've got, got confused.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm next, or Patricia's after me, I believe, in the row. So I think what happened, uh, last, uh, with the demonstrations, I, I believe in having demonstrations. I believe in the freedom of speech. I believe in the, in the freedom of, of people getting together to voice their concerns. I think it's very important. I like that Chief Sweeney has come up with the six-step plan. But I think as the city council, we have to actually create benchmarks to make sure that the police are meeting those goals that they have set out with Chief Sweeney and continue to work with the public, uh, making sure that those are the right goals. And if we need to move in a different direction to actually be successful in La Mesa and creating that equality that we deserve and we need. I think, uh, with the racial tensions, we need to also start to look at what our police force looks like to make sure that it represents our community. La Mesa is a changing community, and I think that's great. Um, I also think that with the police oversight board, we need to make sure that that is a permanent board, that it is not going away with any new council coming in, but that it stays and it remains functional. And I think also that we need to make sure that they stay transparent, they keep their independent auditor, and they make sure that the police force are not part of the situation or the evaluation, but they're purely to, for explanation purposes. I want to make sure that we have absolute transparency in our city and everything that we do. And I think it's important for the community to know that they have a say in how things move forward. Because as a city council member, you work for the community, not for yourself, not for your donors, not for your party. You work for the people and what they want to see happen and change. I think the other thing that we have to look at in the long run is looking at how the police interact with the community, and I think a great place to start is working with our students. We have the interaction with bike rodeos, we have safety training for children. All of that is a positive and it has to continue and continue and reaching out to more populations in our community. Thank you.
Thank you Kathleen. And Patricia, we'll let you wrap up this question on, uh, policing racial tensions and public safety.
Uh, yes, and thank you for the question. Uh, first of all, um, la- there was an after-action report that was established last year by Hillary Heinz. And in that report, it stated countless errors and missteps that were done by the police department. Um, in addition to that, uh, I want to make it clear about exactly uh, what I know are the facts in regards to that, um, incident on May the thirtieth. Um, there were peaceful, peaceful protesters that were initially involved. And, uh, I have talked to countless voters regarding this. There's a lot of people that lived, uh, very close to the Vons Shopping Center and around that area, and there were tons and tons of witnesses regarding this. But unfortunately, there were people that were from outside the community that actually came in and started the riots and began, uh, you know, violating our buildings and, 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 and breaking the windows, et cetera. So the after-action report that was given was actually, um, a definition to help guide, uh, the police department to make those corrections. And that was just the beginning. It was just the beginning. Uh, moving fast forward, uh, one of the reasons why, uh, it's so important for the board uh, to understand the complex issues of the police department is number one, it's, it's, it's been there forever, and, um, they've never been forced to have to make changes before. And like any corporation, I've worked for corporate America and also run my own company. And whenever things, uh, change, uh, the, the organization needs to change and adapt to the community in which they're involved with. And in this particular case, we have the same issues where the police department had to basically face up to issues that they needed to address. And I think that it's a really good start that, uh, Chief Sweeney actually has the first step process and that the, uh, CPOB is number one of the six. And, uh, it's only because he decided to lean in and listen and, and really hear what the community was trying to say. They want, they want transparency, they want accountability. But they, they just simply want people to tell them the truth about what happened and then tell them how they're going to fix it. Or at least address it and make changes to make it better and minimize incidents like we've seen in the past. Uh, there hasn't been three incidents. There's been many incidents, but unfortunately, some of them haven't been as, um, you know, uh, public as others. And that's what the independent police auditors were hired to do. And as far as the ordinances are concerned, they are very secure in, in keeping this board. The board's not going away. And it has to be people that understand, and that's one of the reasons why we're involved with NACO, which is, by the way, the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, is in a national association that the board is involved with to help get the training that's needed to continue to address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patricia. Our next question deals with housing. The San Diego region has a serious shortage of housing, especially affordable homes, as do a bunch of California. The city council has made some steps to attempt to address this, recently allowing homeowners to build accessory dwelling units, also known as granny flats. As Laura mentioned, though, there sometimes are issues with that. Um, also, they have approved some residential projects that were taller and more dense than in the past, such as a, a large project at Baltimore and El Cajon Boulevard and a new four-story mixed-use development. Uh, or not mixed, I'm sorry, a four-story apartment building that they just moved forward on this week that will be going on new police, the, the old police station site downtown. Um, some residents, though, have voiced concerns about waiving height limits and allowing denser construction that could impact parking and the historic community character in La Mesa. Candidate Jim Stiringer, who isn't here tonight, has called the new Baltimore project a fortress and said he thinks this kind of thing is out of scale for our area, while others view this as a solution to the housing crisis. I would like each of you to share your vision of what smart growth means to you and what kind of housing you would like to see over the long term in La Mesa. And specifically, can you address how you would balance these conflicting term, these conflicting needs of, um, you know, meeting housing needs while protecting community character? And specifically, do you support waivers for height or density limits in certain, um, you know, in certain circumstances? Uh, Laura, I believe it's your turn to go first on this one. As a builder, you've, you've got some expertise, I think, in housing.
You bet. And, and, and I will come at this from a, a real estate perspective and also from a homeowner that was actually trying to build two cottages in my backyard. I live on Lemon. Uh, my home happens to be de- uh, zoned for thirteen units. Uh, not that I would ever do that, but I was trying to build two cottages in my backyard. The mandates that were required by the city of La Mesa and the state of California, which included fire truck turnarounds, retaining walls, drainage, whatever, uh, turned out to be between two and three hundred thousand dollars, so it killed the project. Yeah. And so what I, what I witness all the time in California, and it's so funny, I just bought a house in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. And the, when I went house shopping there, the price are a fifth, a tenth of what they are here. And Chapel Hill is a university city. It has Franklin Street, which is filled with restaurants and pubs and boutiques. There's no reason for California to be as expensive it is, but there is. And what it is, is we're so regulated. And what ends up happening is that you make it impossible, or California makes it impossible to build. And then, when things become so expensive, then they start subsidizing it, and I was compared to breaking someone's leg and then giving them a crutch. So everybody asks, every builder I speak to says, they've, you've, you've got a simplified building. It permits shouldn't be this brutally painful to get. It shouldn't take years to build a project. I do not like these high-density apartment buildings. The one on Baltimore is a third of a mile. Uh, it's high density, it's changing the entire character of La Mesa. Everyone I'm speaking to, I'm speaking to hundreds of people as well since July. Uh, and everybody's appalled. No matter where you come from, the political spectrum, I don't know anyone that's cheering that building. The one on Allison at the old police station, that's gonna be a hundred and forty-something units. It's only gonna have sixty or seventy parking spots. That is gonna jam up the parking count. And, uh, a- and a- again, the, like I said, the high-density apartment, the, the SB nine and ten, where they're gonna start splitting properties and building four places where houses are, it's just gonna turn neighborhoods ugly.
Thank you very much Laura for your perspective. And Kathleen, as a planner, let's hear your views on this important issue.
Well, I think with all the regulations that are coming down for the state right now, it's very important that everyone understand exactly what's happening with the housing situations. There are a lot of new rules. I don't like it when the state mandates zoning, but we have to work within those parameters right now, um, until we get somebody that makes changes to those laws. As far as building ADUs, yes, you can build an ADU right now. And SB nine has one of those sections where everyone now by right in every city has the right to build an ADU. But that doesn't mean you still don't have to have review of the structural plans, re- making sure that your stormwater is not flowing onto somebody else's yard or that the whole building slides down the hill. La Mesa has, you still have to actually construct something that is buildable and meets all the other codes. I think housing in, in San Diego and in the region is expensive because land prices are expensive because people can sell for more money. Look at how high our houses have skyrocketed in this pricing right now. I mean, my husband and I both have, both have decent jobs, but we would never be able to afford our house right now if we were to go into the market now. So I think some of this high-density development, it's gonna happen. It's, it's inevitable. But I think what we do need to do is we need better architecture and we need stronger design. So in the city of San Diego, they are pushing, the architects are pushing for an architectural review board. We have an architectural review, review board. And I want to make sure that city planners do not have a voting right on that. We need to have, if we have to have this density and it's mandated from the state, then we need to know that we have at least decent-looking architecture. We also need design guidelines with this, which the Historical Commission and the Architectural Review Board can work on. If we're going to have this density within certain areas like near our trolleys, then at a minimum, we need to have good architecture that fits with this community.
Okay, thank you very much Kathleen. And Patricia, could we hear your views on the housing situation?
Yeah, um, it, it, it is a challenge. Uh, as I walk, knock and talk to voters, uh, I'm getting the same, um, feedback. Uh, there's traffic issues, um, that I feel that, um, weren't necessarily, uh, fully addressed as far as other streets that are affected, especially when we talk about just the most, uh, one that everyone talks about, which is the, you know, the Jefferson, uh, 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 build that's almost completed at this time.
The Baltimore Drive project?
Yes, the one on, on Baltimore. Um, it's the one that, that, that most of the voters, uh, talk about at this point because it's affected them in many ways, um, especially with traffic. And I think initially the thought was that if they offered less parking and made it closer to a, a trolley stop, that that would minimize, um, uh, you know, cars. But that remains to be seen, right? Because there's really no other place to park, uh, on the street, uh, right in front. You know, if we're just gonna use that as an example, because it's, it's, it's one that everyone, uh, seems to know so much about. Uh, and across the street is the fire department and, uh, you know, the post office. So I'm just wondering if, you know, there's gonna be parking there instead of people, uh, getting the idea of, uh, one car per unit. Uh, what is somebody gonna do if they move in and they have more than one car? And is that really going to encourage people to take the trolley? I, I hope they do. Um, the whole idea was to be environmentally effective, but that remains to be seen as far as that location. But what I, I, I do think that, uh, there is something to better architecture and, uh, well-thought-out planning. Uh, we're forced to have to, uh, deal with this issue. But I think that if we stay along the trolley line, there's other places like along the eight corridor. There's another space that's gonna be opening up for high-density property. I think that, uh, as long as it's thoughtfully pro- thought out and traffic is also a consideration that it can be done, it just needs, uh, be, you know, better design and better, better thought-out process.
Thank you very much. Yeah, good point. Just because you live on a trolley line or even commute on a trolley doesn't mean you might not own more than one vehicle for going places on weekends or maybe one spouse that works further away. So it seems like that should be considered. Uh, Meijan, uh, let's hear your views about how you would address the housing concerns in La Mesa.
Absolutely. That's a wonderful question, and you know, all the.
Volume again, it seems like it keeps slipping there.
How funny. Uh, I gotta check the volume on my laptop. Uh, my apologies.
Okay, we'll start your time again.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, you know, I have been talking to La Masons since April. I was the first candidate to announce my, uh, candidacy. I was the first, uh, candidate to apply and file for, uh, this election, and I have been talking to literally thousands of people in La Mesa and hundreds of business owners and folks like people who own, uh, the owner of Honey and Hive Salon, uh, right there on La Mesa Boulevard, coffee shop, um, that is called, um, uh, Lightbulb Coffee, uh, right down the street from there. And so many other amazing business owners and folks that live in La Mesa have been talking to me about their housing concerns. People cannot afford to buy a home. As Kathleen brought up, there's many people here in La Mesa that would not be able to o- afford the home that they live in right now had they had to pay for it. And that's outrageous. You don't have to have children or be married or have grandchildren to know that people that are struggling cannot get into affordable homes. It is a crisis that is epic. And we want to introduce a first-time home buyers program in La Mesa to help people secure housing, whether it be a condo or a freestanding home, to help them, um, in their time of need. The housing that is being built, there's just not enough affordable, equitable ass, ac- access to affordable hu- housing. And if we do not create more, uh, larger percentages for our communities that are working to get into these housing, you can build all the buildings you want, Miriam, but if you can't have people afford them, then what's the whole point of it, right? It just doesn't make any sense. So we need to increase the amount of accessible, uh, equitable access to, uh, affordable housing and make sure that we introduce one of the first, first home buyers programs in East County. And it is very important.
Very good. I think El Cajon actually. Are you done? You had fifteen seconds if you wanted.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say, we want to be able to introduce this for La Mesa because our La Mesa residents need them. And folks like me, who are trying to secure their first home, cannot afford to live, uh, in a place, um, that is so highly priced. So we need to be able to do better by all of our community members. Thank you.
Very interesting idea. It's a city of El Cajon, I should note, has a first-time home buyer program, or they did at least, um, so. But, uh, it, very interesting idea. Um, next question, moving on.
For this question, Miriam?
Pardon?
Are we into one minute and thirty-second answers yet or still?
No, this is the last one. It'll be two minutes and then we'll be going on to shorter ones, but we'll give them two minutes. If you want it, if you can say it in less, then, then more power to you. Um, but La Mesa's downtown merchants have struggled in recent times with challenges posed by, you name it, you know, street shutdowns, a recession, a pandemic, civil unrest. I would like to know what ideas do you have for helping to support these businesses and enhance the downtown district? And beyond that, to revitalize or redevelop other parts of the city where residents and businesses want help to improve their communities too. Um, Patricia, I believe it's your turn to take this one first.
You know, owning, uh, your own business is such a challenge, uh, because the first thing that you think about is your overhead and your payroll. Um, and, uh, and not to mention the amount of money that you put into it yourselves, uh, as a, as a business owner. And so there's a lot, uh, to think about when you think about, uh, if you're referring to the, 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 the village and specifically. Uh, but there's other businesses that are located, uh, that are not in the, in, in the village, but they're still in the city of La Mesa. So the challenges continue. Um, I think that, uh, the city of La Mesa can do more, uh, to help businesses uh, and to promote businesses. And one way, uh, of, uh, promoting, uh, maybe, uh, not in, uh, uh, all, for all businesses, but just an idea that I think, uh, is an excellent idea, is to go back and refurbish in areas where the city is a little bit more rundown. And, uh, one of the. And one of the areas is on Alcoa Home Boulevard. And there are all already businesses there, but they're kind of spread out. But if we did some refurbishing and made it so that it was more of a Renaissance feel where we have the the businesses and the shops at the bottom and apartment living and townhomes and condos. All running alongside where you make it more of a walkable area, bikeable area, and just a community within itself. Another selection. And this would increase business, it would increase the walkable business. And it would, you know, help businesses get more business because there would be more of a community available to them. That would be close. And, you know, there's other things that we can do to help improve our businesses and help make sure that they get the, you know, the all of the revenue that's needed to, you know, support them. But since I'm out of time, I'll I'll let it go at that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Patricia. Meijon, could we hear from you about what you would do to help the businesses and the downtown district as well as other parts of the city? That, you know, that sort of want the same sort of attention.
Absolutely. I think the small businesses in our community are our lifeblood. And I am an absolute proponent and always have been of buying local and supporting our small businesses. When you go to our social media, whether it be on Facebook at Vote Meijon twenty twenty one or or our Instagram account. You will see that our community members, specifically our local small businesses, are supporting me for this race. Because I know that we need to support our community members that have these small businesses in not just the downtown La Mesa Village area. But all across La Mesa, one of the ideas that we are promoting on our equitable policy platform is making sure to increase the support for reef, not refurbishment, excuse me. Making sure we can have folks retrofit their businesses. Because we know that businesses need to be able to be retrofitted and the cost is very costly for our community members. And making sure to increase the amount of small business improvement loans that we can be able to our grants. We can be able to provide for the community. These programs only help to amplify and help thrive for our community members to thrive. And we cannot, we cannot turn a blind eye to them. Folks like Mario Mario de La Mesa, folks from places like Hawkins Construction. Folks from places like Marietta's and other amazing, wonderful businesses in La Mesa are really doing their best. Keep their community, keep our community running. And especially during this pandemic, many places like Hug Thai off of Lake Murray Boulevard have really made sure to try to do a good job about serving our community even in the midst of this pandemic. So I think we need to be able to take the federal funding and help allocate funds to helping these small businesses. Not only improve themselves, but also if we can be able to support them, retrofitting their buildings. So we can not only have a safer environment for our community members, but a cleaner and greener environment for our community members and the generations to come. Thank you so much for that question.
Thank you, Meijon. Let's have lost, Kathleen, did you answer that one yet?
No.
Okay, it's your it's your turn then. Let's hear your views about the how you would help the downtown district and other business districts across the area.
Well, as a city planner and a landscape architect, I have a very broad and and solid understanding of how cities work. And all the different rules and regulations that help and promote businesses. I really love the village. It's one of the things that attracted my husband and I to come to La Mesa and buy our first house. And I think when you have problems with downtown and the struggles with parking, I, one thing I would like to do just very simply is just really promote all the possible parking locations that are downtown. When there's conflicts with the, whether it's farmer's market, whether it's the antique car show. There is a lot of parking in downtown that I don't think a lot of people even know it exists. And I think even just having a map on our city website, as simple as that. But I think we also need to think about how we grow La Mesa, whether it's the housing, whether it's the businesses, they all come together. And what I like is something called a fifteen minute city. Where that everything that you need in your neighborhood was within about a fifteen minute walk. So we do need to think about the village and all of that that's there. And we also need to think about creating more neighborhoods. Our Alcoa Home Boulevard, our University Avenue, our Lake Murray, those should be our Adams Avenues. Those should be our firm streets. Again, with the mixed use and we have specific design guidelines for a lot of these communities in these corridors that we are just not enforcing. It is commercial or retail on the bottom floor with housing above or behind. That way it gives back to the adjacent neighborhood. We have to think about who's coming into La Mesa and we have to think about the existing residents of La Mesa. And we need to work together. And with that comes zoning codes and regulations. And I understand all of that.
Thank you. And Laura, I didn't mean to skip you. I'm sorry. I'm getting confused about the order here. But I saw you smiling on this one as someone who has a business downtown and also serves on the La Mesa Village Association. I'm sure you must have some ideas on this. Let's hear them.
Okay, so yes, I've served on La Mesa Village Association boards for the last fifteen years. A lot of people don't recognize, I mean, they're the unsung champion downtown La Mesa. The La Mesa Village Association, they bring us car show, they bring us holiday in the village. They bring us, they brought us the farmer's market, they brought us Oktoberfest. They're what's made La Mesa a destination place. I'll go out and have lunch in Point Loma and they talk about La Mesa Village. In real estate, La Mesa Village has the desirability of La Mesa Village has extended its all all the way to Mount Helix. Windsor Hills, Grossmont, Lake Murray. I always say the village is to La Mesa, but the Hotel Del is to Coronado. It's 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 like the heartbeat of La Mesa. The pandemic was brutal on our businesses. There's a very popular restaurant in town that showed me her checking book in January of this year. She had eleven hundred dollars in it and she had thirty thousand dollars in outstanding debt for that month. I tried to help the businesses when they were closed down. I offered, I volunteered to put plastic tables in the walkway of the stars. A sanitation table. I clean it, I collect the trash. I just wanted people to pick up to go food and go there. City La Mesa said no, they they weren't allowed to put public, I couldn't put a public table or a table in a public space. Which made me laugh because our public parks are filled with public tables. So it's just like there was no, I felt like there was no one helping the businesses. And I know that right now across the country, there isn't, there's a further attack on businesses. Los Angeles is now has a vaccine passport. And if you do that, if you make businesses have to serve only people that show vaccine passports, that's going to be devastating to the businesses. Never in the history of the United States has our government gone out of its way to destroy businesses. Yelp says something like half the businesses will never come back. This is an attack on American businesses and we are the lifeblood of of, everything is built by business, hospitals, police, roads, freeways, bridges. Schools, everything comes from business and they need to be treated better.
Thank you, Laura, for sharing those thoughts. Let's see, find the next question here. Oh, we're going to do some one and a half minute answers now for the next questions to move it along a little faster. La Mesa's library.
The timer for ten seconds.
Pardon?
The timer will go off at ten seconds. Thank you, candidates. I'm sorry if I'm interrupting you.
No, 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 that's okay, Jonathan. Thank you for clarifying. La Mesa's library was originally promised as a temporary step with a larger permanent library to build built in the future. And yet in recent years, those plans fell by the wayside and it didn't happen. Some people are calling for it now. And there there's also people calling for building a bigger community center, a community theater or a community meeting space that nonprofits and other groups could utilize. So I would like to ask each of you, do you support a new library and any of these other concepts? And if so, they all sound great, but in these challenging economic times, do you have ideas on how to fund them? You know, such as a bond measure as was used to fund the new police and fire stations or some other source of of money that you may have in mind. I believe, Meijon, I think it's your turn to go first on this one, is that right?
Sure, I'll go first.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Jonathan. And I know Jonathan from over a decade ago during my work in I just want to say shout out to Jonathan, being from this community and growing up in La Mesa, having roots in this community. I actually lived across the street when I grew up on El Capitan Drive, right across the street from where the police department is now. We, I absolutely, absolutely agree with having a permanent library. And making sure we create a permanent library arts and technology hub to also provide free five G wireless for our community members. We can generate funds by having events at the arts center like it used to be, like we used to have over twenty, thirty years ago. And having gallery shows, supporting local artists and cultural events. I think that we can be able to have a beautiful, a permanent library and making sure that we find a space where all of our community members are included. Because arts and culture, we know is the lifeblood of making sure people can heal and express themselves. Especially during these times of the pandemic. And as a person who believes in science and is vaccinated, I absolutely believe that we need to create a revitalized community center and that not be, and it not be ignored. It absolutely has to be the La Mesa Library Arts and Technology Hub. And we can be able to dedicate funds from the events that we host at this event, at this venue. And whether it be in the heart of La Mesa or where the present temporary library is or at another location. I look forward to working with the library task force on trying to find a permanent home and helping all of our community members experience what I experienced with my little sisters growing up and being able to have a dedicated space that's permanent for our community to enjoy.
And do you have thoughts on funding, Meijon?
Absolutely. Whether it be funding through the city and making sure we create initiatives through tax, a small fraction of the tax that are generated from the city. Or we can also be able to use the bond measures if people are supportive of that. I am not going to announce one specific idea. I'm absolutely open to a conversation and getting the feedback of our community members on the costs and how to pay for these things. We absolutely deserve nice things, Miriam. Having a permanent library is not, should not be a you know, a dream. It it needs to be a reality and we need to be able to fund that as soon as possible.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, Meijon. Laura, what are your thoughts on the library and these other community center and theater ideas?
Well, I always think economically. So if you are flushed with cash, then you buy the nice car, you buy the nice house, you go on vacation, you do wonderful things. So if the city of La Mesa is just flush with cash, then go ahead and build a cultural center, civic center or whatever. However, if you have, you know, and you have potholes and your city is a little bit rundown, I would prefer the money, the taxpayer's money going toward infrastructure and improving the cleanliness of the city, the safety of the city before I started doing things that were more wants than needs. As far as our La Mesa library, because I love libraries. Every time I go to La Mesa Library, I'm so pleased with it. I get every book I want. I get whatever movie I want. The staff knows exactly how to find anything and I I don't know if anything about it is shortcoming. I think it's a lovely library and I don't know if we need to spend millions of dollars on a new library. So I always think get your fiscal house in order before you start doing things that are that are extracurricular.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Kathleen, could we hear your thoughts about a potential new library and the other things that we've talked about that some people are calling for?
Yes, I think a library is absolutely essential. And we were promised a library that meets the county standards and that we have never achieved. And so I think we have plenty of space in the city to do something like that. I think right in that giant parking lot next to city hall, there's a great potential for building out that library. We were promised that library ten years ago, ten plus years ago, when we raised our taxes to build the police station. And instead of the city using the money for the land of the police station towards the completion of the permanent library. They pay, had to pay the county for the land, seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. So for me, what we need to start thinking about is what's called public private partnerships. And this is my expertise again, as a city planner. Where you work, and this is being done in a lot of different communities in California. You work with the private sector to get some of the facilities that you want for your community. So that giant parking lot next to city hall, there could be a library on the ground floor with a community center slash mini convention center and a theater that all of these rooms can be intermingled and used for different events in different configurations. That could be on the bottom floor and you have housing up above. You get the developer to pay for the shell at a minimum, the shell of that building. That is called a public private partnership. We, what we basically leverage the land that we have, that we own. And we use that to create an incentive for a developer to give us the additional things that we need. We need to work smarter, not harder.
Thank you. And Patricia, I will let you wrap this one up with your views on a new library for La Mesa and other things.
Yes, I I I I agree that we were promised a more permanent library. And unfortunately, we had to pay a very sizable amount because we didn't move forward. And and even after ten years, tried to, you know, support the promise that we made to the community. I I see the library as a place that we can create programs that meet that meet the needs of the community. For instance, we used to have a long time ago, a program called Six to Six. And that would accommodate parents who couldn't necessarily afford all the money to send someone to daycare. And, you know, and and have to pay for the facilities before the child could go to school. You know, they may have to be at work before time, so they need to drop them off earlier so that they can get to work on time. And then, of course, they need that extra cushion in the afternoon when the child gets off of school. We called it Six to Six. I'd like to bring back a program like that. I'd also like to see a program that was filtered through the through the library that assisted kids that graduated from high school. And maybe they didn't, you know, choose to go to college or maybe they felt like that wasn't an option for them. That maybe we could offer other programs that were through the library. Maybe they were training programs that would actually take place other places. But there's actually programs that are out there that that would pay a person as long as they have a GED or a high school diploma. They actually can start work, get a a living wage pay, okay? And then, or a living wage and also have healthcare and even a pension. So just create programs that focus on the needs of the community and bring that together. And I'd like to see municipal bonds being created by that. And I'd like to hear communication from the residents of La Mesa. If we could show how we could create these municipal bonds to help pay for the 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 new library. And I also agree about the location being opposite the, you know, the location where the new police off, police department is presently, that we could have a library that was different, that had a kitchen, that had a coffee station, that had couches and chairs and places for people to go and read books and also have arts and, you know, different programs that could be held within the library and without the library, outside the library, like a, like a, you know, patio area for people to go out and sit and chat or read a book, curl up with a book. So just a different type of library filled with books, but also filled with different activities and programs that would meet the needs of our community. And we can go on and on about those needs. It could be for healthcare, you know, just programs that not necessarily always take place within the library, but places where people can utilize those programs by, you know, going through the library to have those those programs that would meet the needs. And at the same time, we can also build for the for the public safety needs outside of that.
Okay, thank you, Patricia. I want to throw in a quick question. Since Laura raised the issue issue of public health mandates. I would like to, well, I want to point out that first a shout out to our people in our region that San Diego actually made national news today for having one of the lowest COVID rates in the whole nation. And probably not coincidentally, one of the highest vaccination rates, eighty percent of people over twelve locally are fully vaccinated. And almost ninety percent, eighty nine percent are at least partly vaccinated. But that said, obviously, not everybody agrees with masking mandates and and especially vaccine mandates. And we've seen some cities, you know, embrace them or even go farther than than state and federal mandates. And others that have gone the opposite way and ignored or even openly defied the mandate. So I would just like to ask each of you, what role do you believe the city of La Mesa should have in? So I would just like to ask each of you, what role do you believe the city of La Mesa should have in um, you know, enforcing or making sure that, you know, the region follows or doesn't follow whatever the county, state, and federal mandates may be uh when it comes to a public health crisis such as the pandemic? Let's see. Well, Laura, it's it's actually your turn to go first. You want to go ahead and you kind of said part of it. We'll let you elaborate a little bit if you want to.
Or yeah, okay. I um I don't like how much government has taken over every facet of our lives. The United States has become such a great or became such a great country because of the freedom of the people, the entrepreneurial spirit, capitalism, just freedom. And we've got the government uh telling people to shut down their businesses. We have the government telling people that they can't vacate their own homes and move into their own homes for over for if the eviction moratorium I'm talking about. Um we have uh the government uh ma- I I'm and I don't believe that a vaccine should be mandated. Um I don't, especially something that's experimental, especially when any information about it that opposes the narrative is shut down. We're not having, oh, it's talking about transparency. We're not having transparency. We're not having open debate. We have an uh an economy that's that's on crutches all across the country. Now people are there, the the flight industry has been disrupted. Um the hotel industry was disrupted, hospitality. Uh New York is dying, uh Los Angeles. I in and it's just, I can't, if I if if I'm on City Council, they and they try to do a a vaccine mandate on our businesses, I will fight that tooth and nail.
Kathleen, could we hear your views on uh the mandates here? And by the way, Laura threw in the um eviction m- moratoriums or eviction, you know, thing too with COVID. So if you want to throw that in as well, any of you, uh that's fine.
Well, I I have to first say that I believe in science. And I think as a city official, we we have to look at the county and the state and the federal government to give us the best information they possibly can. I think everybody has a right to choose, but I encourage everybody to become vaccinated. My family is vaccinated. I couldn't wait till it was my turn to be vaccinated because I wanted to get back to work. And I think that's why our economy is starting to turn in San Diego is because people have been vaccinated, because the rates are getting lower and we can get back to business. That to me is absolute most important thing. Get back to business. Now, as a city of San Diego employee, they are now requiring that everybody proves that they're vaccinated. But there is the opportunity to be excluded based on religion and uh physical needs if you're um can't take the vaccination. So there's always those things in the American society that allows you to be an individual. But for me, as everybody has stated over and over again, all of us, we want business to thrive in this community. So stop fighting. Children want to go back to school. You know, teachers want to know that that they're not bringing something home to their to their families. Let's do what we need to do. You make the choice to vaccinate or not vaccinate, but make sure that you have that mask, make sure that you're abiding by the six-foot rule, and let's get back to work, La Mesa. Let's make sure our community continues to thrive the way that it should be thriving.
Okay, Patricia, your your views on uh public health mandates?
Yeah, um you know, um I I see the public health um uh mandate as a protection measure for a pandemic. Uh I remember having to take uh my children to school. And I never ever uh remember every single time uh they went to a new school, we had to bring in, especially at elementary uh age. Uh we had to come in and the first thing that was asked is, you know, proof of residence and our vaccination cards uh for the children. And I never remember a picket sign. I never remember a protest. I I don't remember any of that because it was a health care issue. Uh I think that um what the scientists are telling us. Um you know, I remember when polio uh came along, um it I was very young, but people saw the death of a polio. And when they saw missing limbs, um there it was a visual. And I think that unfortunately during the pandemic, people are dying, but people don't see uh that death. And uh and that's one thing uh that makes a difference is is seeing all the death. And we hear about the death, but we don't see necessarily the actual death. And I think that, you know, just like war, we don't like war and we don't want to see it. And I think that it's important to understand that this is very serious. And um you know, I think that when it comes to businesses, that they have to, you know, do what's best for their business and they have to have that freedom to be able to do it. But the 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 members of the community need to feel safe. And so we we have to consider all of it. And I think that for a business, you have to make your decision about how you want to keep your employees safe and your uh and your uh pa- patrons safe as well.
Yeah, thank you, Patricia. Your point about people not seeing it is well taken. I I have to say that my daughter works in an ICU unit in a hospital and is has been doing nothing but the last year and a half with dealing with the most critically ill COVID patients. And most of them aren't making it in her unit. They they go on and she has to put the intubation in and ninety percent of them don't survive that with COVID. So it it's it's a very serious situation. But on the other hand, you know, the freedom of people to be able to make a living is also uh an important consideration as well. So these are very tough tough things. Um also just want to add one tidbit of information out there on the vaccines, just a factual point, and that is that for viewers who may not be aware, the Pfizer vaccine was approved and is no longer considered to be an experimental one, you know, for that, for what that's worth. Um and the vaccines are available for anyone who wants them now free throughout the county, including it, you know, pharmacies and doctors and many other places for those who choose to get vaccinated. Mijan, we'll let you have the last word on the public health question.
Thank you so much. And this is such a great question. Um thank you so much. I think that we absolutely uh need to understand that America is famous for not just freedom, but for science. And the fa- and the science behind vaccines has been there for many decades. The reason why we don't have polio rampant in our communities is because of the polio vaccine. And we need to absolutely make sure that our children and our elderly and all of our community members are safe. And we pull through this pandemic. We are not um at the end of this process. And the CDC just reported this past week that over a hundred and forty thousand children have been orphaned as a result of either a parent or a secondary caregiver uh having uh uh died of COVID nineteen. This is uh unconscionable for us to continue to either ignore or not address. Our community members deserve to live. We deserve to pull through. No matter your socioeconomic economic background, no matter your ethnicity, no matter your job title. And with all due respect, I would like to take my advice from public health officials and not other people that don't have a background in science and public health administration. That is exactly what will lead our country to uh success. Making sure everybody can be able to receive the vaccine and be able to receive the booster shot. And it's also important to make sure to understand, I I want to convey my condolences to all the people I know and the people I don't know that have lost a loved one uh because of COVID nineteen. I've actually had many community members and colleagues lost loved ones and making sure to take care of those that are suffering and still grieving. My condolences are with you.
Time. Um on and more upbeat note. Some breaking news for those that haven't heard yet, but Tuesday night, the city council approved creation of an arts and cultural commission. It'll be an all-volunteer commission, so not costing taxpayers anything there. Um a new milestone for La Mesa. I would like to ask each of you what you would like to see the new commission accomplish to help support the city's arts and cultural community. And if there's any new events that you think they should come up with to draw visitors here to discover La Mesa's attractions and highlight the diverse cultures some of you have talked about or showcase and or showcase our local artistic talent. Kathleen, uh you can go first on this one.
Well, I think it's a great start to have an arts and culture commission. I think that we we definitely have very creative and we have a history of being very creative. And so I think what what we need to do is basically make sure that the Arts and Culture Commission has the authority to bring events forward. Even if they're outdoor events held at our parks, held in our streets. I love the idea that again, that as La Mesa is changing from the little town that it was into a vibrant community, I love the idea that we are bringing the art and the culture forward. It creates this connection with our neighborhoods. Again, as I said before, you know, I I want to see our our streets like the neighborhoods in North Park with with all these events taking place and and it's the uh Hispanic cultural event and it's the Norwegian cultural event and it's the you know, we already have the German cultural event. So I want to see all that moving forward. I would love to see more public art. Um other than just our snail, I think we can move more forward with doing other events and and other pieces. In the city of San Diego, they have one percent for art. For certain developments over a certain uh development price, they actually have to put in one percent of the development fee for its art. So there are so many things we could do with this that that combines with the other organizations like the library group that's coming forward to find that permanent space. And I think that it's just gonna make uh La Mesa even stronger and better than it is.
Very good. Uh Patricia, could we hear from you on your thoughts on the Arts and Culture Commission?
Yes, um I'm I'm happy uh that that was um passed and I think that it's going to uh keep eh with the spirit of La Mesa. Um because I think that uh I've always seen arts and culture here. Um uh my children uh played the violin uh when they were uh going to, at the time was La Mesa Middle School. It's now La Mesa Arts Academy. Uh and and then also continuing on at uh at Helix High School. And uh you know, I think that uh arts and culture is so important. And I would like to see uh that uh commission also have the authority to help bring uh events to La Mesa uh and 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 you know, some of these uh communities that we're talking about going back in and redeveloping, you know, to have access uh to an organization like that that can help us uh with those events and include arts and um culture. Uh I also happen to be chairing the uh co-chairing the uh the Juneteenth for twenty twenty-two, which is going to be held at the La Mesa Arts Academy School Grounds. And uh you know, to have that participation and have that assistance, that help uh in bringing art uh and uh culture uh to that event alone uh would be a great uh opportunity. So I'm I'm happy about it and I think it's going to be uh fantastic for the city of La Mesa.
Great, thank you. And by the way, the council also did vote to make Juneteenth a holiday in La Mesa as it's now a a new federal holiday as of next year or this year. Um Mijan, your turn to address the Arts and Cultural Commission.
I love the idea of the Arts and Cultural Commission. It is high time that we have this for our community. I'm a lover of the arts, a lover of culture. I think we need to celebrate all of our communities and and look forward to attending and supporting the Juneteenth event happening in twenty twenty-two. And I thank Patricia for, you know, being part of this uh 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 community group that is really providing the cultural uh uh layers to our community that has been missing for so long. One of the things that I bring to this city council is an experience of culture. Being the daughter of Afghan refugees, I have an experience of speaking a language, having a culture that is over five thousand years old. And it is absolutely critical that we celebrate the cultural differences in our community. One of the ideas that I would love to do is to uh center our communities of color and start to celebrate things at City Hall that we have yet to celebrate. You know, Indigenous Peoples' Day was just uh passed and I would love to be able to honor our indigenous siblings, our Kumiai siblings that live and are the stewards of this land uh and make sure that we integrate them into our community in La Mesa. And I think it's very important for all of us to understand that arts and culture only adds and helps heal our community, especially in times of crisis and pandemic. You know, one of the things they did, is that it? Uh well, one of the things they did in past years and past uh decades, uh even uh over a hundred years ago, when there was a pandemic, they turned to writing. And as the uh former head of the the news editor for the Highland Fling High School newspaper at Helix, I know that we need to support our young people in expressing themselves. And this is an excellent tool to do so.
Time. Shout out to Helix. We've got lots of Highlanders here, including myself tonight, apparently. Uh Laura, I guess you get the final word on your views about the Arts and Culture Commission.
Oh, I think it's fantastic. Um I hope that uh Yeah, woo. I I hope we have uh concerts and I have dance shows and I hope we have film festivals and art exhibits. I think it's wonderful. And I need nothing and add nothing more to that. I think it's except for one thing. The last time the United States had a pandemic was nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and that was also the year of Woodstock. We didn't shut down, just saying.
Okay, good point. Good point. Yeah, you know, film festival is an interesting thought because a lot of people don't know La Mesa was once a silent movie capital. There were over a hundred uh silent films made here during nineteen ten and nineteen eleven with a studio that was right there on the Mesa Boulevard. How about that? And a director that went on to direct, you know, John Wayne and all kinds of famous movie stars in in Hollywood after that.
We were Hollywood before Hollywood existed.
We were Hollywood before Hollywood existed. You're absolutely right. The Flying A Studio. Couple more very short questions. I think we can probably do these in a minute or so each, but I'd like to touch on green and sustainability and ask each of you, you know, climate change, of course, is a major global issue, but also everyone wants clean air, clean water. Uh what ideas do you have for promoting a a clean, green La Mesa?
At this point, I'll start beeping at one minute and not say ten seconds.
That's fine. And I think I've lost track. Patricia, I think it's your turn to go first. Is that right? Anybody remember? Okay, go ahead. Go for it.
Okay.
No, actually, we ended with Kathleen. That that's wrong. It would be Mijan's turn to go first. This, no, no, we ended with
No, we we ended with
I was right to begin with. Okay, Patricia, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Um so you know, the environment is something that we have to pay attention to. We can't ignore it any longer. And we're we're past due on some things that we should have been addressing a long time ago. Um you know, we do have to find ways to reduce admissions. Um I uh mentioned the cotton um cottonwood uh mine uh before, and uh that is a concern for me because I know that uh uh the cottonwood mine is requesting a permit uh to drive very large uh trucks filled with, you know, dirt and uh uh take that right down our ninety-four, one-twenty-five, and eight corridors. So we have to pay attention on a large scale. And we also have to pay attention personally. Uh there's, you know, there's recycling and uh you know, or organic compost now with the uh with the uh with Edco. Uh and then also we have to pay attention when it comes to building our new uh developments uh as well. So it's just, it's a wide range of things that we need to do to pay attention. And we need to be more conscientious about saving our environment. And we should take it seriously. Uh I don't know if my time is up, but I figure that's a minute.
Thank you. Mijan, your thoughts on a clean, green La Mesa?
Absolutely. This is critical to our community and making sure that we leave a better city for the generations to come. Yeah, part of our campaign is absolutely fulfilling the campaign uh the climate action goals for twenty thirty-five. And as I mentioned earlier in our conversation uh with the candidates, uh we were, I was discussing helping re uh uh retrofit our buildings. One of uh our community members was sharing with me that her building would actually cost upwards of eighteen to twenty thousand dollars to retrofit. And that's outrageous. Not that many people have that kind of money laying around anywhere, right? And so we need to be able to help our community members, especially our older folks and the folks that have businesses in La Mesa, retrofit their buildings so we can have a cleaner, greener community. And another idea, our equitable policy platform is uh really supporting is creating a competition for our high schools, our local high schools and middle schools for sustainable growth ideas. Some of the most brilliant ideas have come out of our own La Mesa residents. And if we allow the children of our community to be inspired and enter a competition with um with regards to what is a clean, green, environmentally sustainable ideas, we can encourage that growth with our community. And we also have access to San Diego State. And we also have access to San Diego State and UCSD, these amazing world-renowned universities that we can be able to cooperate with and work in collaboration with to think of new ideas for our community. And as the only candidate again endorsed by the Sierra Club, I think it is critical for us to make sure we leave a cre- a a clean, green environment for all of our community members. And it's absolutely an equitable issue because as we know, because of our uh, highways and our freeways uh, and being at the cross section of so many of them, we know that there are higher rates of asthma as well as um, issues with women who are pregnant. And uh, you need to be able to address those, uh, to be able to leave the environment better.
So we're down to one minute candidates. It's 8:30.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Laura, can you tell us your thoughts about what you would do uh, to have to improve uh, clean, green, you know, I don't know, I'm tired, clean, green, sustainable issues in La Mesa?
Um, I am pro-clean environment like like nobody's business. And um, I think there's a big difference though between La Mesa environment and global climate change emergency plans. I think those are two different topics. I think that La Mesa puts up with too much litter and trash on our streets, on ramps, off ramps and parks. Um, why do we have to enter on Spring Street or Palm or or Jackson and just see tons and tons of garbage? And I want to see the city address that and not try to alter the world's climate. Um, one thing that La Mesa could do that would be very interesting is there's a lot of plastic packaging that's completely unnecessary. I understand people have a plastic water bottle. I never do. Um, but you have, every laundry detergent has scoops. Nyquil's have scoops. Protein powders have scoops. They're completely unnecessary. It would be interesting if La Mesa decided to collect tens of thousands of scoops just to show corporate America, you don't need to have scoops and we'd have less plastic in the ocean. So I just feel like, look, I just feel like global climate change is outside of the realm of La Mesa city management and we should work on local environment, which is trash, potholes. There's a little telling me she wants a barrier between her and the 125. Let's let's pay attention to the Masons.
Okay, Laura, thanks for your views. Kathleen, could we hear from you on the issue of clean, clean, green, sustainable uh, La Mesa?
Well, I think this goes back to what I said before about a 15-minute city. It's a, it's an urban planner concept. And basically, if you create these neighborhoods where people have choices, where they don't have to get into the car to go to a store, they don't have to go to get in their car to go to a cafe or a restaurant so that we create these neighborhoods where people can walk and bike safely. I think we also have to be looking at implementing our Bike Master Plan. I think creating bike lanes and segregated bike lanes should be a priority. I know I bike along around the city. My sons biked from elementary school all the way till they were in high school. And I think the other thing is, is that sidewalks, something as simple as sidewalks. There is a new state regulation that we need to have directional ADA ramps at every intersection now. We need to start improving our sidewalks. We need to make sure that people can actually safely get around, that the the corners are timed correctly, that there's a safe landing zone in the medians. All of that has has been so backlog in La Mesa. We need to pull it together so that we have a greener city and a safer city.
Okay, well, thanks to all of you for sharing your views on that. My my last question, another short one that you can probably answer, some of you have already addressed it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway for those that didn't. Uh, for each of you, who are your most significant endorsements or the ones you're most you're most proud of? And also, it's been brought to our attention that there's, as in many past La Mesa races, there's been some deceptive mailers going around, uh, at least one of which has misleading endorsement in information about another candidate's endorsements in the race. So I would like to also give you the opportunity, if you want to, to correct any misinformation that might be landing in voters' mailboxes. Um, let's see, I think Ms. Jean, I think this this is your first one.
Sure, absolutely. Well, um, I've been endorsed by Councilmember Jack Schu uh, and Vice Mayor, and I'm so proud of that endorsement as well, of course, as um, the endorsement from the San Diego County Democratic Party as the only candidate endorsed by them, as well as the Sierra Club and the San Diego County Women's Democratic Club, the AAPI Dem Club, San Diego Progressive Democratic Club and IBEW 569. I'm absolutely proud of all of them, uh, and I think the the proudest endorsement that I have received is really from the San Diego County Democratic Party, not just because I used to work for them, but because I know it means so much. Um, those are not things that are just handed out. I think most people don't realize how difficult it is and I am very humbled and honored to be able to be a candidate amongst these women uh, because it is a difficult task to run for office. And uh, we only have one mailer that's gone out so far. We have a couple more coming out. And this is a a design, uh, and this is the back of it. And uh, we have um, raised money from an all-graft roots volunteer campaign. And we look forward to, you know, having the support of our community. And I urge you to vote for Mijan um, for La Mesa City Council and I look forward to working with you uh, and making sure our community can turn a page and create a more equitable future together. Thanks so much.
Very good. We will have closing statements at the end, by the way, of a minute each after this. Laura, uh, would you like to tell us about your endorsements?
Uh, yes, um, I am endorsed, I'm the only endorsed candidate from the Republican Party of San Diego County. I'm endorsed by the uh, nonpartisan Pro Business Lincoln Club. I'm endorsed by Reform California. I'm endorsed by the San Diego County Gun Owners who fight very hard for the Second Amendment to be able to protect yourself. Um, I've also, I've run for city council before and I always did it on my own. This is the first time that I've used professionals and we've raised tens of thousands of dollars from over 100 contributors and their businesses all over La Mesa and some of the biggest names in the county. I mean, household names have donated to my campaign. Uh, and so those are the endorsements that I'm very, very proud of.
Okay, thank you for that. Kathleen, can you tell us about your endorsements uh, as well? And if if there's anything out there that you want to correct that's gone out in the mailboxes?
What are you asking me, Miriam?
Not you, no, not you specifically, but you know, go ahead. About endorsements, anything you want to say about endorsements? Let's leave it at that.
I am endorsed by Art Madrid, the former mayor. I'm endorsed by Erin Emmerling, um, who is the founder of the La Mesa Village Voice. I am endorsed by Rick Turner, who is a La Mesa resident and a business owner of Capha Surveying. Um, and I'm also endorsed by Joe Bronworth, a professor in the Political and Economy Department of Grossmont College. I'm endorsed by locals. I am no big parties, no big organizations, just local people who do a lot for this community. So that's basically it. And that one flyer, okay, I'll I'll call it out since Miriam, you're calling me out.
No, I wasn't calling anyone. I I didn't actually know who sent it. I just know there was one that was brought to my attention that claimed a candidate in the the race was endorsed by a group that apparently didn't endorse it, uh, probably sent by an opponent. So I, but I don't know who, I I didn't know who sent it. So, but anyway.
The Lincoln Club sent out a flyer for me, which had, um, they have copyright infringements on my photograph because my website is copyrighted. Uh, it states very clearly on there for those that that read that uh, it was not okayed by me. It was not uh, put out by me. And as Laura said, it's uh, they're endorsing her and I really had quite surprised by that, but um, and they got all my points wrong. So in a lot of respects, and the other thing is, is they they pointed out that I'm a Democrat, but this is a nonpartisan election. And I really want people to think. I want people to pick the candidate based upon their qualifications and their expertise and what they can do for this community and what they have done for this community. And that's where I think that I come in without having to have the big names.
Yeah, no, that's good. I just wanted to set the record straight that there's been some some dirty tricks out there and it's not the first La Mesa race where we've seen that kind of thing happen. So thank you for for clarifying that, Kathleen, and that you had nothing to do with that mailer. And Patricia, uh, you'll have the final word on the endorsement question.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yes, um, well, uh, the biggest endorsement that I have is Dr. Akela Weber. She served uh, as the uh, city council member and uh, she uh, uh, asked and uh, selected me uh, to uh, take her place. So that's um, that's a trusted end- endorser. I've also been endorsed by uh, Bill Baber. He serves as a city council member for La Mesa. Uh, I've also been endorsed by Marcus Bush, who is a city council member uh, out of National City. I've also been endorsed by uh, the Laborers uh, and the Pipe Fitters and Plumbers, Local 230, as well as my most recent endorsement last night, which is uh, the Carpenters. Uh, I also have a lot of community endorsement uh, like Dr. uh, Janet Castaños, who also serves uh, as the Chair of the Community Police Oversight Board, where uh, the two of us have uh, worked very hard uh, for La Masons, um, you know, right, you know, right here all along and many other uh, endorsements that uh, people may may or may not know that they're all on my website, patriciadiller.com. Um, a lot of people from uh, the city of La Mesa that just are huge supporters of me and uh, believe in the work and uh, all of the work that I've had done and would like to uh, you know, see me do more for this community. And I hope people will also consider that even though I was endorsed by Dr. Akela Weber, I have actually earned the the right uh, uh, to uh, serve on this position because of all of the outreach that I have um, performed to make sure that voters know who I am.
Very good. Uh, I want to thank all of you for that. And now we're going to go on to closing statements. We'll give each of you one minute to give us your closing statement and include any final thoughts that may not have been covered in the um, forum or to reiterate the strong points that you want voters to remember on Election Day. Um, Laura, let's start with you. You you were last on the opening statements, so you can go first on the closing statements.
All right. Again, thank you for for doing this candidate forum. Uh, you and I go back 10 or 11 years uh, with these interviews and so I do appreciate your effort and open, you know, making sure that the East County Annal Mason uh, knows what's going on politically. Uh, so anyway, in closing, um, I, uh, again, a longtime La Mesa resident, La Mesa mom, La Mesa businesswoman. Um, when I see uh, businesses struggle or homeowners struggle because of permits or regulations, over taxation, I feel their frustration. Uh, there was a salon in La Mesa who an inspector just showed up and said, is it okay if I inspect? She said, of course. He found old brow tint in a storage closet. She didn't even know it was there and fined her $1,000. I want businesses that get punitive punishments like that to be able to say, hey, Laura, help me. And I will help them because that shouldn't happen. You shouldn't need a permit to move a an outlet or to hang a light or to do carpenter nails. It's just, it's to have a pickleball lesson. I mean, it's just, it's just too much. And so my feeling is that as a member of the private sector, that I have the city of La Mesa understand and and roll out the red carpet for the for the businesses and and bring in more events, more income, a beautiful, cleaner city. Uh, the 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 more income we have, the better it is for everybody in the city. And we shouldn't do this all the time. The government should do this because every program, every housing, every building that government does is not from the government, it's from the taxpayers. And I'll tell you, when I was a kid, my mom didn't work because she didn't have to. But taxes, it becomes so egregious that all you have are two-income families. No one can stay home anymore because the, because so much taxes are taken out of our wages. And why? It's for all of these programs when when we really should just let people kind of just be.
Hey, thank you very much for that and for joining us on the forum. Kathleen, let's hear your final thoughts.
Well, what I'd like everyone to remember is my experience and my passion for this community. Uh, like I said, I've been living here for 21 years with my husband. We raised our two sons here. And for 20 years, I've been volunteering, whether it's in the school systems, whether it's for the city. And now I'm on the Community Services Commission, which is basically La Mesa's parking rec board. I am passionate about this community and that is why I'm running. It is not to move on to a higher office. It's not to have greater ambitions. I am pro-business, but I see it from the form that I have been a business owner. I have worked for private business. And now being in the public sector, I know how to make it easier for people to build the ADUs if they want it. I know how to make it easier for business to thrive if they have to shut their door and create outdoor eating spaces. I know all that and I have that experience that I can bring forward to La Mesa. But again, I want to reiterate that I believe a city council member should represent the community. We're never going to make everybody happy, but I am here to listen. And I am here to be able to promote residents and businesses alike. We need to work together, cleaner city, great city, keep it the jewel of the hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Patricia, could we have your closing remarks, please?
Yes, um, you know, uh, one of the things that we have to be is uh, concerned about La Masons and their issues. And there are many issues. Um, but you want to have a person that will first of all, listen. And uh, and also have a person that can help solve issues and get results. Uh, there's no uh, reason to uh, argue, fuss and fight and still come out without any solutions or any answers. And we want to be able to work together. Uh, I have already been spending my time working with the the city of La Mesa and with the La Mesa Police Department. And even though there's times when we don't always agree, it is important for each of us to work across the aisle and get things done for La Masons, no matter what. Uh, and that is my promise uh, to the citizens of La Mesa that I will definitely do that. And I, because I am a businesswoman, I I ha- I do have that empathy and I do have that understanding and uh, have put my blood, sweat and tears into that. And uh, and I look forward to being able to work for the city of La Mesa.
Okay, thank you very much, Patricia. Mijan, you can have the uh, the final say in giving us your closing statement.
Thank you so much, Miriam, and thank you, everybody who's tuned in and thank you to all the candidates that have decided to run for this election. I'm honored and I am so humbled by the women that are a part of this conversation. As a woman of color, as the daughter of Afghan refugees that are lifelong union members, as a civil rights advocate who has based her civil rights pro uh, pro bono nonprofit in La Mesa, our organization is called Borderlands for Equity and has built up an experience of over 20 years being active in the Democratic Party and having lived in La Mesa and grown up here for over 30 years. I know that for whoever has seen our door hangers to the 10,000 people plus that we have been reaching out to since April, I thank all of you for your support and I look forward to serving on a La Mesa City Council and working with our wonderful city council members, Dr. A. and the community members that make up the boards and commissions. I know that we can turn a page on the ugly incidents of the past several years, whether it be business leaders, civic um, engaged individuals, faith leaders or our incredible activists and advocates. I look for working with you um, and making La Mesa and creating a more equitable future for us all. Thank you.
I want to thank all of the candidates for taking the time to run for office, to participate in our forum and share their views so that the viewers and also I should say the listeners, this will also be aired on our radio show on KNSJ and those on our website can hear from you. Our last forum had literally thousands and thousands of of views. And so hopefully, a lot of voters will be seeing this tonight or listening to it. And it really, it takes a lot of courage and to to put yourself out there and run for office. So I congratulate all of you on that and I wish each of you the best of luck uh, in the upcoming election. Now, for the audience out there tonight, you can find information on all of the candidates here tonight, as well as, you know, the others in the race on our website at eastcountymagazine.org in our politics and our La Mesa section, where we will be posting a podcast of this. So if you tuned in late, we've got friends that didn't get to see it. Uh, it, we will have that up tomorrow for those that didn't catch it tonight. Election Day is November 2nd, Tuesday, November 2nd. All La Mesa residents should have received a ballot in the mail, which you can mail in or drop off, I I believe, at designated ballot locations. If you didn't get your ballot yet, or if you still need to register vote to vote, there is still time now in California. You can contact the San Diego Register voters or visit their site at sdvote.com. Uh, again, thanks to all of you who tuned in. Thanks to all of our candidates. And this concludes tonight's La Mesa City Council Candidates Forum with East County Magazine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Jonathan. Have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Best of luck to everyone. Thanks, Miriam.
Thank you.